Monday, August 28, 2017. We generally start our meetings with a moment of silence and ask that we keep in mind those people who are involved in the Texas storm tonight and think of them as we power moments on. Thank you. We're pleased to have tonight the two staff from Tribe 93, Andrew and Anthony Trotter. And the boards have consented very nicely to give us, to come up and lead us into the subject.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The boards are holding their communication badge, and so when people speak tonight, if you speak up, that will help them to absorb the goodness of the message. We have our agenda before it, and are there any changes to the written agenda?
Madam Mayor, I would like to modify the consent agenda, pulling Item 2, placing it at same business number one.
You've heard Mr. Fiocco's motion, is there agreement by the board to pull Item number 2 and the consent agenda made at new business number 1?
I'll second that.
The motion is made by Michael Fiocco, seconded by John Bonnet, those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. So we'll move number 2, then is there action on the consent agenda? Pamela Baldwin has made the motion to approve the minutes of August 14, 2017, seconded by Michael Fiocco, those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion carries. We have two public hearings tonight. One of them is an annexation request for Reiman Properties, the Old Townsmen Plant on Long York Pittsburgh Road. Jeff Jones is our town planner and will lead us into the public hearing. We need a motion to go into public hearing, if I might have that. Second. Moved by Michael Fiocco, seconded by Beth Wilson, those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion carries. We are in public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the Board, tonight you're holding a public hearing on Annexation A, 2017-05. It's for Reiman Properties, or better known as the Townsend Chicken Plant Properties. Property is owned M2 currently, and the acreage, the request is for is 20.303 acres. Owner is Reiman Properties LLC. Currently staff is reviewing a concrete facility that is looking to upfit the chicken plant site for this location, and annexation because of water and sewer already being available to the property is a requirement for a state. If you answer any questions?
We do not have anyone signed up to speak for this public hearing. Does the board have any questions to the planner?
Jeff, you may mention that the property is already served by water and wastewater, so they have their own treatment process out there, so they also sending that flowing back to the plant for treatment.
Yes. Their whole treatment facility or operations from the chicken facility, chicken plant facility, is no longer part of this property, it's owned by someone else.
Okay.
So all of their sewage that is created either by the concrete facility or upfitting these warehouses for office space of the old plant itself would be coming to our system.
This is just domestic type flow?
That's what we've been told.
So no industrial, no pretreatment requirement?
We had a sign up sheet for this public hearing, but is there anyone that failed to sign up that would still wish to speak on this particular project? Hearing none, and we'll move to the second public hearing, which is a special use permit. Victoria Bailiff will be working with us on that, this is property between Old 87 and U87, the Old Medical Center, is that correct?
Yes, the Old Medical Center. This is special use permit, SUP-2017-03. Amanda McRae is requesting a special use permit to operate the daycare facility at 75 Old Graham Road in the Office and Institutional zoning district. The applicant will be making no exterior changes, external additions, other than the erection of a fence to enclose the play area.
Turn it on.
The daycare will be able to accommodate 85 children and 12 staff members for a daycare of this size. The ordinance requires 21 parking spaces, and the current parking lot can accommodate this. Staff is recommending approval of the request. Are there any questions?
We do have one speaker signed up for this public hearing, and this is a court judicial evidentiary hearing. Sandy Brady, who is an adjoining property owner, and Sandy, it's been, before you come up, or as you come up, I have an oath to administer to you, and let us do that now.
Madam Mayor, you might want to swear to all the witnesses if there's anybody else that's going to speak.
The applicant here wishing to speak? Is there anybody? Do you have the applicant?
I'm here.
Do you plan to speak?
I can raise a question, but...
You may just want to get sworn in.
Okay, yeah, that's great. Sorry.
And is there someone that didn't sign up that would like to speak on this particular issue? If not, if you'll repeat after me, aye, and state your name.
Hi, I'm Sandy.
Just solemnly affirm, that the evidence shall be due...
That the evidence shall be due.
To the Pittsburgh Board of Commissioners...
To the Pittsburgh Board of Commissioners.
In the case to be heard...
In the case to be heard.
Shall be the truth...
Shall be the truth.
The whole truth...
The whole truth.
And not be but the truth.
And not be but the truth.
Thank you.
Good evening, thank you, Madam Mayor and members, for allowing me the opportunity. I received a letter about a week ago stating the special use permit that was coming into play, and today got around to reading it sadly, and when I did, there was a response opportunity at the bottom of it that said that I could respond with an email even, and so that's what I did. And you all quickly responded and said, no, we need you in person. So I thought I would read to you the email that I presented to you all today earlier. I do live at 15 Westfield, which is right across the street from the property in question, and this is my response. "The only concern I have about a busy and large daycare coming to this location is the traffic. There is an enormous amount of traffic coming and going around the little roundabout on both Highway 87 and Old Graham Road all day long. I also am a former patient of the doctor's office there, so, and I have reports and I'm just aware of all this. The majority of the time cars don't slow down until they get right at the circle. I am very encouraged by the possibility of building a fence. Secondary to the safety of the children in general, I realize that for parents all coming and going at basically the same time in the morning to drop off and pick up in the evening could present another concern. This will increase our traffic situation and possibly create the same kind of bottleneck effect that I see at the elementary school as parents line up to take their children in or get their children out. The only point I wanted to make is just in regard to safety, and having 87 children on that point of land sort of feels like a lot, and so I just hope safety will be taken into consideration if this moves forward. Thank you all very much."
Thank you very much. And Amanda McRae, do you wish to raise your hand of any sort?
As with any childcare facility, we are well aware of safety concerns that are that is... Let me strike that. We are building a fence, playground situation, actually we are going to be above what the state requires, which is a six-foot fence compared to four feet, which is the current state regulation and requirement. As far as traffic, I do understand some of your concerns with traffic, though, however we do have, it's not all at one time like the public school system is. We have various times that parents drop off, some at seven, some at 30, some eight, some at least eight thirty. So it won't be as congested all at one time, it'll kind of be staggered within about two-hour window, and I'd be more than happy to answer any safety concerns that any of the neighbors or community has about it in specific. But I just wanted to supplement that.
Thank you, Ms.
No problem.
I have a question to the board.
Yeah, I have one question regarding the fence. Knowing that property whereabouts would your fence and playground be?
We're gonna put it on...
On the Old Graham Road?
That Wednesday, it's pretty...
We've planned it out with them and looked at that back and, you know, made sure that they're within any boundaries that they can speak. We've looked at it with them.
Commentary is required?
Um, I'm sorry. The state requires that you have offensive area of at least half of what your capacity is allowed, so when we plan out the size of the offensive area, it would be enough to accommodate 44, which is actually a little bit more than what the state requires, just to make sure that we meet the requirements.
Forty-four what?
Children. It's per, the hundred square feet per child.
So forty-four hundreds per?
Yes.
And can that fit on that site?
Oh, yes, sir. I have a whole diagram that has it...
You do?
Yes, I have.
That's exactly what I want to see.
Okay.
I want to see a diagram that shows where this is located.
Okay, I can rather roll.
Well, that's really part of my commentary tonight is feeling like I don't have enough information here to be able to make the findings I need to make. And one of my concerns is the location of this fence. Is there going to be playground equipment within that fence? And is the land suitable for locating? Is it suitable for locating playgrounds? Because I've gone out to the site and looked at it. If I wanted to go next, there's a slight elevation change, and so I'm thinking playground equipment on that slope, I'm not sure it's going to work, and I'm thinking...
We don't have any stationary playground equipment, so it's not going to be anything that's going to be like stationary. There's like playhouses that would be on the upper part, on the level part of it, but there's not any equipment, equipment per site. It's mostly private, just like playhouses and like... It's not like there'd be like all, you know, more...
The other thing that I'm curious, well, I'm curious, but need to know is, I see a sketch of a parking layout, but I don't trust that that is to scale and/or that it can actually occur upon the site.
The parking lot is what's existing, there's no changes to what's already there.
So that striping is out there?
It's faded, it has to be re-stripped, you know, so it's more defined, but there is striping out there.
Okay. The angled parking, I did not see any evidence of that.
It's a gravelled area that they had in there, so it wasn't straight, that's the only part that's not straight, but there is 21 spots in there that's on the actual paved part of it.
Is that what they're just showing 21 spaces?
Yeah, there's the 20 in there, and then there's one that parks up next to the side of the building as well, that's not straight because it's just one parking slot, it's not, you know, multiple.
I agree that there's 21 spaces out there, but I don't think they include those angled spaces, so...
No, the angled spaces are on top of the 21.
And how many handicap spaces are out there?
There's one out there.
Okay. So you'll be striping that accordingly? Yep.
You know, we are charged with a pretty heavy burden of the city on a special use permit, and we need a lot of documentation, and it talks about a full site plan accompanying the application, and this is not a full site plan. So I'm trying to find a way, I want to reuse that building, I want to reuse that property, and I'd like to support a daycare there, but I'd also like to be sure that it is providing a quality facility for these children.
I understand that. We've been open for over two years. We are a service center as it is now. We're just relocating because we're in a small building itself on a well system that needs, you know, covered water supply, and the demand is definitely a need, so we're just trying to, you know, accommodate the community.
I just have one question. I know that that playground is close to the road, is the fence going to be such that if someone were to run off the road, that it would provide protection for children?
It's only a six-foot chain link fence.
But more than the height, I'm concerned about whether or not it can stand impact from vehicles or whatever. So what can you tell us about construction, other than the height?
It's a typical chain link, honestly.
That's what I was going to ask about the fence also. So it's just going to be around the playground area, which is close to Old Graham Road, is that right?
On the right, yeah, on the right-hand side.
Just on the right-hand side. Well, that's my concern to the traffic there, and I know that it's very, very busy, and a chain link fence, I don't know if that would be the, I know that that's probably consistent with what the state requires, but is it all possible, like something took with it sturdy, is it all possible?
People that want to do a roof there, or a property that's sturdy.
I don't know. So on the property, is there any other place for a playground?
Unfortunately, no, because of the easements to all the properties. This fairly large easement, the right-hand side of the building is the only spot on the property that will allow us to put any kind of playground in that.
They need to be explosive, you don't want children...
Right, exactly, because the only other option would be in the other side, moving parking, and then that would mean we would have to walk them outside of the fenced-in area to get them there, which is unsafe in my opinion. So we're better off putting it on the side of the building, and then the doors off the back of the building that will have a fenced-in wall section to fill up the playground section.
What page is due you, Congress?
Zero five.
I have just one question, maybe from Mr. Gruesbeck. Is this, I know how 80, 087 city limits are like a puzzle, is this property completely in the city limits?
Yes.
Okay. But is the adjoining property behind him, is not a direct connection?
There's some things and outs.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Cresfield, do you have any sense of how protective a chain link?
So, I'm sorry, I'm free.
I was just wondering if you could provide any insight as far as a chain link fence protecting, I'm sure that cars would not be going at a high rate of speed, but can you, do you have any sense of how a chain link would prevent a car from getting children without playground?
Well, obviously, that'd be kind of beyond my experience, other than, I've seen several accidents involving chain link fences and fences around pastures that were made to keep bulls in, they didn't keep cars out, so, you know, it would take, in my opinion, a well-reinforced fence to keep, you know, cars out, but I don't know of anywhere in our jurisdiction that would have something that would be built to that standard or that we require if I don't want our planning to zone roads. I think your biggest concern would be, you know, of suitable dimensions and design to keep children from getting out into traffic would also be another concern. I'm sure the building codes and our planning codes apply to that.
There are several other neighbors to the property, is anybody else wish to speak? Are there further questions?
I've got a couple issues, I guess. Will NCDAT be reviewing this for a driveway from given that it's a change of use?
I don't know. I don't think they review probably.
I don't, I don't know that they do. I've never seen it.
A change of use? Let's make an inquiry. So you may mention of staggering the arrivals, and I think it's a very successful way to mitigate and manage the traffic flow, and so as part of this approval, are you able to include in this approval a schedule of deliveries? I think you said seven, seven-thirty, eight, eight-thirty?
I mean, the, it really depends on parents, you know, what their parent's schedules are, I just know from currently and what I have now, is we usually get a little bit at seven, commonly get maybe five at seven-thirty, and then maybe another five at eight, two eight and eight-thirty. A lot of the parents will either have seven o'clock starting time or eight o'clock, then we'll have, sometimes we'll have to do that, you know, our nines or later, because a lot of them work for you and see nursing departments and stuff for their hours, you know, just based upon whatever the hospital schedules for them. It's very rare that we've ever had, like, everybody come and drop at the same exact time. I mean, I also do have, if you want, I do have the playground layout.
Are we able to put it up on the screen so that everyone can see it? I don't want to do that. I can scan it, does that work?
It'll be available in two minutes. You're not making a decision tonight.
Right.
We didn't think it was part of what you needed staff to...
Well, knowing that code requires the land to accommodate so many sort of feet of a playground...
That's what staff would review during the zoning compliance part.
Right, and so part of what this board has to be assured of and convinced of and documented is that that does exist, and the easy way to do that is to provide a site plan.
This is a small business owner that we are trying to accommodate to fit into an existing building. What's before you is the use, not the site plan.
The special use requirements demand a site plan, and so I am with you on trying to find ways to make this work, but at the same time, I will not chirp my responsibility of not making sure, I've said this is a public and safe environment.
I think the applicant is hearing you, and then we will work with her to hire an engineer to provide a site plan, because that's what the site plan requirements are.
So I would like to have stipulation that the delivery, the deliveries, the drop-offs be staggered, we don't have to say exactly how it's staggered, but I think it's a good tool for managing traffic out here. Yeah. The other thing, well, let me pick up. Yeah. I think if you're closing down business, you know, there could be one or more. But one of the things that I got to thinking about is drop-off in the morning, I don't know where the parents are coming from, whether they're coming from the north or south. They're coming from the south, heading north, they're going to be making a left turn in. There could be a lot of opposing traffic, and if we've got folks who are trying to make a left out at the same time, it could be a real congested area, and those left people trying to make a left turn in may be sitting out there in the weather going to pack in the traffic. And one of the ways I thought of a remedy to that was to require that everyone exiting, make a right out, and that staff could patrol that.
Okay.
That's right, they want to come back and go.
Come back where?
They could do that. But I'd also like to know that that's a problem to solve.
Right.
That's a DOD treaty, I'm not sure you have the authority to require a right turn on it.
You couldn't have the school, the daycare center, require that people exiting, make a right during peak hours.
What's the ramifications if a planner doesn't do that? How are we going to, what are we going to enforce? Are we going to write a violation to the state here? What's the remedy for a violation?
In this matter, the self-care care...
Anything we ask people to do, we should be able to enforce.
Well, if you say that you're not, you're not performing enforcement for the stipulation of a special department, which city you're doing in.
That's the remedy you would like to place, and yes.
This is a technique that has been used in many different school areas, and has been pretty successful, because as the elder, you will want to adhere to your...
I don't think I'm going to have staff available 12 hours a day, be out there from six to seven.
So really, what I'd like to know, though, is, is this, again, a remedy to an actual
problem? I don't know that it is. It would be good to ask one of our consultants, transportation consultants, to analyze the flow and make a recommendation to them.
We'll have to, that's, we'll have to hire an engineer, an area engineer, and we'll have to...
In this matter, we're going to the planning board first?
No, no, it's probably not going.
I can't support that. I can't support asking the applicant, hire two engineers or stuff. I'm already wondering about hiring an engineer for site plan.
I will say, Mr. McRae, my wife is a 20-year veteran schoolteacher, early childhood education, so I really admire your business, and, you know, as I said, people are our most valuable natural resource, well, children are priceless, they're even more valuable. So thank you for your work, and I will say that I am very pleased that you're moving into town.
Thank you. We're currently in town, actually. We're only outside of town. We're out in the...
I looked, and I'm sorry, I was mistaken, I thought you were outside of the town limits.
Well, we're out of town limits, but we're like right on the borderline, honestly. We're just down Austin Chapel, we're a little bit further past the town line.
Well, my only question was that, to wonder how many children you have currently at your present location?
Currently, we're age 18, because our license is allowed since 18.
Wish you much love.
Thank you very much.
Where are you located now?
We're also Austin Chapel, we're also on a thorough circle, so we're about halfway down the road.
Are there any further questions?
If you're going to continue to accept information like a site plan, you probably ought to continue this public hearing and go back, so you can receive whatever it is you're going to receive.
I would like motion to continue the public hearing until, um, next meeting, which is September 11.
Give a second. If that, we can receive additional information?
I think that's the special permit, the judicial, so...
I think that's the special permit, the judicial, so...
Is there a second to Mr. Fioco's motion? Hearing nine, is there another motion for the floor? Is there a motion to go out of public hearing at this point?
I don't know.
Moved by Jay Farrell.
Seconded.
Seconded by John Bonnet.
I have a question. There's been talk of perhaps our engineer and the one, or she's not, we need to resolve that before we go out of the public session. I hope she knew that we would, and there's a reason for her hanging, whether she needs to hurry up here.
Well, she is going to have continued work with our planning department, and there will be a presentation.
Will there not be a planned report?
It will be, but as the town attorney has stated, if you want more, if you desire more information, testimonies from professionals, as discussed tonight, then you probably should continue up the hearing. If staff's evaluation of the site, working with the applicant to go over, if what we are here to debate is the use, then y'all might have all the information that you have. If not, then I think there was a motion, but it didn't carry.
Well, the motion that's on the floor was by Jay Farrell, seconded by John Bonnet, that we go out of public hearing, which would then leave this matter resolved by what we've done tonight, hearing what we've heard tonight. It will progress then to the planning board and then come back to this board for additional questions.
But if you need additional information, if you close this public hearing, you'll have to advertise for a new one. If you don't need additional information, then you don't have to do it. You can go ahead and make a decision.
Well, Michael Fioco, he needs additional information, but his motion was not seconded.
I understand.
So, I, to gather that, the motion that's on the floor currently needs to be addressed.
What is the feeling of the board, of the board members? What is...
I don't like the idea that she has to hire two engineers. I don't like that idea at all. I think if maybe additional information that can be provided, I'm not sure without her hiring those two engineers.
We can work with her and provide you a plan that also shows the fence where it's going to be located on property. We can help her present you with the specific type of fence, if that's what you would like to see. Is there any more?
If there's some way we can ensure that it would be safe, you know, the car is running off of that.
Who would you like to hear from?
It seems to me the manufacturer could give them some indication, but not really to hire an engineer. Is that possible?
I'm not sure. I'm checking on that. Old Graham wrote, there's probably enough pine tree.
And I was curious about the grade, but I just don't think that these, this level of questions are...
It's not like that there's a special one, but there's a ditch there, can you correct?
We could provide you with the...
Well, I mean, we can, we have that, if we can get that information, we can get some refinement of that information. You can keep open the public hearing until the eleven. We'll still take it to the planning board with all the information that we have tonight, anything that we can gather from the applicant. Planning board is a recommending body. They'll either recommend it or they won't, or they'll take it with for more information, and you'll see it on the eleven. And then, if you can hear from the plan board's recommendation, you can have the public hearing continue, you can close the public hearing, and you can make a decision at night. So, continuing it doesn't mean that you're going to delay the process. If one or more board members feels like that refinement of some additional information, you can do that. I'm not sure that if we have to go to a level of an engineer, that doubt, you know, is going to be able to perform that requirement in the next two weeks. But you can make the decision or take a look at the information that the applicant provides between now and the eleven and say, no, I still feel uncomfortable that this is not quite what we need. It's too important to me to make a decision on this based off the drawing that we have, and I do need an engineer to take a look at it. And then, that can either influence your vote, or you can continue the meeting, the public hearing additionally, or close it and then ask the applicant to go back to the drawing board and go through the process all over again.
Mr. Jones, I very much appreciate what you just, the picture you just painted. And I imagine that I could be satisfied. I share some of your concerns. I do, Mr. Fioco, Commissioner Foley. But I just part company on the idea of having the applicant hire professional staff to convince us of these concerns. So, Commissioner Farrell, if you'd be willing to withdraw your motion that I seconded, I will support continuing the public hearing for the purpose of asking staff to deliver the kinds of information that we're concerned about.
Certainly. I would be glad to withdraw my motion.
In that case, Michael Fioco's motion is, are you willing to second?
Continue the hearing?
To continue the hearing.
We have a motion to withdraw and second.
Okay. Mr. Farrell made a motion to withdraw, and John Bonnet says, seconded that, so those in favor please indicate by saying aye. The motion is therefore withdrawn.
I'll make a motion to continue this public hearing.
Second. Moved by Michael Fioco, seconded by Beth Wilson Foley. Those in favor please indicate by saying aye. Those votes, motion carried. Thank you. Now, we do need a motion to go out of public hearing for tonight with respect to the annexation of the project as a... Moved by Beth Wilson Foley, seconded by Michael Fioco. Those in favor please indicate by saying aye. Thanks. Motion carried. We have six matters tonight to be addressed. Public expression speakers, there are two persons signed up, and this is the first speaker, Ellen Brooks. We remind folks that they come to the, come to the front, that we do wish that matters be concise and that if you have additional materials you want to address, it can be also given to John Cook for inclusion again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Tonight, I'm here to ask you all to consider making our current budget a more valuable tool with a little bit more detail. It's difficult to follow the history of a project. It's difficult to even find a project, you know, for example, the sidewalk project. You know, I couldn't find anything about it except when, on the agenda items, when we transferred money from one account to another account. But I think it would be, I don't know if the right word is transparent, Jean thought it was, I'm not sure if it is or not, but it would be helpful for us if this was like a giant checkbook, and that one of the things we're buying is the sidewalk project. So, the citizens would like to, I'm certain they would like to know how much we've budgeted, what we're spending, and did we come in under budget, or did we come in, why did we go in over budget? That would, that would make it a more useful tool. And in addition, I think I found that at the end of the calendar year, we do have some kind of financial update. I think that's what I'm finding on the budget. But it would also be nice if we had more of those updates for projects. Have I made myself clear? And I want to ask Boy Scout, isn't this a meeting? Is this a meeting? Thank you.
Thank you. And the next, and last speaker is Pat Harris.
May I, thank you, Mayor Perry, and the rest of the board here tonight for giving me this opportunity. I was wondering, and this is my opinion, it's not critical of anybody, and it's not complimentary either, and I just wanted to kind of clue maybe some of you men on what your neighbors and the people in this town are saying about the twenty million dollars, I think, we're going to spend to move the town hall. Is that, am I correct in that figure? Now, what is that? What is the figure?
I don't know.
We haven't.
We haven't.
We haven't got one yet. It's not what I envisioned.
That's not what you envisioned. Okay. Well, that's what I have heard. And so, I think that's what pretty much upset most of the people in the, in the town. You know, I think probably, I don't know, I know you need more room here. I understand that. And I wonder about the land that we already own here, have you considered maybe expanding here? Because I want, my biggest concern was in moving it uptown, but that, I understand the old higgly wiggly lot that was purchased recently. That's a really congested area in there. And, you know, there's a one, one stoplight here in Pittsburgh, and coming from the south, you can't make a left hand turn presently. I don't know if they're planning to change that or not, but I feel like, you know, a couple of years ago, I think they wanted to, or someone wanted to build a small school there, and there was a lot of uproar about traffic concerns and so forth. And so, I feel like building a town hall there is going to create even more congestion in that area. And I also feel like that in the city limits, it's a small area, and that most of the people that are, that have lived here have been in that area for quite a while, long home, older people. And I think any kind of expenditures of that amount would raise taxes exponentially. And I don't see how they can afford it. A lot of them complained about the water bill, which is really, I think, way out of reason myself. I think that the town needs so much done on infrastructure, and I can't, it just doesn't make a lot of sense to me to see them pay that amount of money to build a new building here. Like I say, that's my opinion. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to have me tell you how I feel. And thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Pam. The next matter on the agenda are Commissioner updates and Mayor updates. I wanted to take a moment to tell you that I'll be signing tonight a proclamation for a program called PACE, which is a program of all inclusive care for the elderly. They're going to be celebrating for the first time the annual, what they hope will be their annual, based on, it is a wonderful program which helps to coordinate preventative care, acute and long-term care services, so that adults here in Pittsburgh can stay in their own homes. And this celebration is intended to raise awareness of the program and its mission to promote the independence of seniors who wish to remain in the community. So, I'll be signing that tonight and attending a program that they're going to have on September first from one to three, which is right here on West Road Road. It's, it's an important program, and as Pat Harris said, we're all getting a little older, and those services are just extremely important here in Pittsburgh. I've also received communication from Dennis Streets from the Chadon County Council on Aging, and he is organizing a committee, a steering team for an aging plan project. It's something that our mayor for a town panel of all, is already is serving on, as I recall. And they're asking for additional members of the board to consider to help with making decisions about how to provide services for the aging in the future. So, there's another, another aging issue. Also, this week, I've received a letter from FEMA asking for certain kinds of documentation. I gathered that this also has gone to Jeff Jones, the planning director, and it's always a little interesting to receive a letter from a federal agency, and so I wanted to make sure, mention that tonight, especially with everything that's going on down in Texas. During the last month, I've been working tremendously with the family violence organization, which is morphing into a newer agency. I've also done a welcome to the Ninety Second District Conference of the AMU Zion Churches at the Mitchell Chapel Church on the twenty fourth. I attended the Jordan Lake Watership Committee meeting in the Research Triangle Park on that same day. Saturday, the twenty sixth, I went to a reception for Women's Equality Day with elected officials by the League of Women Voters. And then, upcoming, I have the September first date of the PACE celebration. So, those are the kinds of things that I've been up to. Are there other updates from members of the board commissioners about the XTC or the Main Street or climate change or anything like that?
I have not attended, there have been changes on last meetings.
Jay Farrell, you and I were going to attend a meeting in perspective, fire departments, but that has been postponed. So, we'll be working on a coordination of fire services to the Chadon Park community.
I was going to say that I've been working with some members of the Main Street program. They're gathering photographs for both current and historical, so they're helping them to bring photos together for a new website. So, that's something to look forward to. There will be a new website of the Main Street program. And also looking for other photographers here somewhere. So, that's what we're going to do.
All right. So, under old business thin, we have the U D O update with planner Jeff Jones. I see we have a little, little light reading.
Just a little light reading, and I expect that maybe, I'll give you to the second meeting, all the things that you have to read. No, this is a good, good thing. Tonight, I'm presenting to you all the latest draft of the U D O. This includes both Module One and Module Two that we reviewed during the twenty fifteen, late twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen calendar year, and submitted comments, not only from staff, but from you all, elected officials, from board members, from the public at large, to our consultant Clarion at the end of last year. Clarion has taken those comments and made edits to Module One and Module Two of the U D O. And what we have for us is the entire U D O document. This process has taken some time to get to where we are, but hopefully, we're kind of getting to a good point where we're going to be able to wrap up this, this current process within the next few months. Roger apologizes he can't be here tonight, but some of those slides and some of the notes that he has placed where you all is, this is a presentation that he would have given to you. Again, he was out of town. What we've got tonight is an overview of the U D O initiative that started in twenty fourteen. I went through a code assessment process during that late twenty fourteen, fifteen timeframe. In the summer of twenty fifteen... In the summer of 2015, Clarion really started in on writing, consolidating our current ordinances, and submitted their first draft to us in December of 2015 for us to consider Module 1. Module 1 was eight of the articles of the UDO that's presented to you tonight. It's 10 articles comprising of development regulations and stormwater engineering regulations, all that would lead us to how to develop in Pittsburgh. May of 2016, we received Module 2, which was the environmental and essentially the development, how to develop. We reviewed that module for the 2016 timeframe, again submitted comments in hold to Clarion at the end of last year. Clarion has worked with staff over the last few months to come up with an agreement on how comments would be addressed. Certainly, there was more comments received than potentially included in the draft that's before you tonight, and some of those things have been highlighted in Roger's memo to you all in an additional document of things that this town would need to consider at a later time after the UDO that's going to be adopted, topics for future discussion. So we'll sort of go through this project website. Late this afternoon, I was informed that this draft is on our Pittsburgh UDO website. Some things that I would like to see included, I'm going to reach out to Clarion tomorrow, and some of the things that if you would like, if you tell me tonight you would like to receive, I can accommodate that as well. As staff, we have a redline version of changes. The document is really thick, so I wanted to make sure that you, that was something that you all wanted to see before I sent it to the printer, because it expands the current 550 pages to 800 or so, because you just have these redlines that go on and track changes. I'm inclined to think that you might want to see that. I'm inclined that the public would want to see that as well, so I'm going to ask Clarion to put that on Pittsburgh UDO website.
I'd like to.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm going to.
I don't want that.
Okay, so you're good with that.
I want a print copy.
Yeah, that's a good point, John, thank you. Who would like a print copy of the redline versions?
I would.
Jay?
Digital, I would.
Digital's good. Michael, you want?
No, I can come up there with a digital.
Yeah, okay, okay. Mayor, would you like a hard copy?
No, I'll do it.
Okay, so.
I'll online.
Mr. Farrell, we'll get you a hard copy, okay. So what I would like Clarion to do is put the redline version along with the clean version that you received tonight, and these supporting documents that you all received in your packet, which included some zoning translation tables of current zoning to what potentially a new zoning district might be, those key topics for discussion for later time, the changes, the key changes that have been made since the Module 1 and Module 2 document, that's important for folks to be able to keep in all, and the zoning comparative, this sort of illustrative of how zoning districts would compare between what we currently have to what might be there. I don't think that's a complete document, because it doesn't compare all of our current zoning districts with new zoning districts, so that's going to be some work that Clarion needs to make before they put that out on the web, but again, all the documents that you received tonight should be uploaded to the web quickly by tomorrow. This is the process that we're going to start with, kind of going through to that good slide here. Some of these go through some of the changes that we've made and some examples of post-UDO discussions. So what's the next steps? Next steps are, some point in time, have some work session, not only with you all, but maybe the planning board. We do have a technical advisory committee, one of those folks together, have copies for the planning board and for the technical committee. We will have public informational meetings that will be scheduled throughout the fall, where I'm thinking more lines of drop-ins for specific topics, so we wouldn't just have, we can certainly talk about any of the topics that are included in the UDO, but we might highlight a specific day, come in and talk about signage or environmental regulations. We'll have a series of those, and they could be either here at the town hall, or the community house, or the public library, or my office, sort of around town, but we should certainly take suggestions from this board on where we might best host those, and days of the week that would be of work as well. During that process, we're going to be communicating with the public, there's going to be changes we know that will come, some additional edits, that, oh, if we could just change that, oh, we forgot to do that. That's going to come during this process, and we're going to have that provision signed, we're going to direct Clarion to make those revisions. We'll hold public hearings, hopefully the public hearing for this UDO process will be in the late calendar year sometime, I'm thinking November or December. And then we'll go into planning board and the adoption. One of the things that Roger is telling me that he'll encourage the town to do is to adopt the plan with an effective date of three or four months out, because one of the things we need to do post-writing of the UDO is to create a new zoning map, and that's going to be a little time-intensive for us to kind of hold that process and have Clarion go through making the map, and ensuring that parcels are zoned correctly, because we're going to have to work with our property owners to ensure that there's on C2 now, or we won't have a C2, we'll have a commercial district, and this might be an opportunity that we want as a town to look at changing some zoning districts as well, cleanup that has occurred over the years that assisted in appropriate zoning. The property owner may agree with us, and they take that as an opportunity to say, yeah, I'm okay if we go to something else and not have to pay the fee, because anytime someone would have to rezone the property, there would be a fee involved in that. If property owners are so inclined, and we're encouraging of such, then we could clean up some incorrect zoning that's been out there for a while.
May I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
So is that the stage where we would, you mentioned the maps, would we then have new maps that get rid of the old pixelated problem, where so many of our maps are pixelated?
Yeah, hopefully we're alone in new technology, having ARC available to all staff, and then having a well-honed GIS program that has.
GIS.
Yeah, we've got some ideas of how we can make things a little bit appealing to the public and to you all on the screen here. So this is the start of the process, it's going to take us a little while. I know we have good intentions to get through this, we have a lot of things on our plate right now, and I understand that. Look at this as an opportunity to set Pittsburgh's tone, and we may be able to answer some questions for others. If we are leading the way with our UDO, and this is how we want to develop, it may be something that we want to tell others of how they want, how they should write their ordinances and things, so. As long as we have a good handle on what we want to do, it would be easier for us to come back and say, maybe you should do it this way, or this way, so, opportunities. And I mentioned that many years ago, that we're writing two UDOs for this town, essentially, and we can see it as an opportunity. Do you have any questions that we have?
I'm looking forward to taking it.
Yeah, yeah, let me know, and shoot me any emails or comments that you have, or, I can't find this, I used to can find it on page 35, where was it? And that might be an instance where we had multiple comments, and that regulation with consultation of staff was either amended, omitted, and we can talk about that too.
Well, I think really, you know, the most important, shorthand to get a handle on what we're doing with parcel, just get it down to the left or two, but I mean, it's really very helpful.
Yeah.
This is what it meant today, this is what it's.
Oh, if we get it the way we need to get it, receive it, that would be something staff uses even beyond the UDO, because we're going to still have some old zoning that we'll have to go back and say, oh, well, it used to be 30 feet, now it's 50, how do we deal with that? So that luscious charge, that is going to be used, we'll have it hanging out of our fumes, and use it for years forever.
I think it's going to help the greater public really understand what it means.
Yeah.
It's a very helpful tool.
Yeah, all right, well, we'll be in touch, and Roger is excited to get started. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, can I say something?
Yes, Mr. President.
First, I can't hear it here with the system. I don't know where you got it, but you need to send it back to whatever part of China you bought it to get it up, but I don't hear well anyway, and I don't hear a lot, I want to hear it, so, a couple of things, I was glad to hear this gentleman say what I think he said, and he's going to make all of this available to the public, and they can peruse it, and by the way, I believe you can find in that 12-point, whatever it is, million dollars, in some of your literature, because I have seen, like your capital, one of your capital budgets, et cetera, et cetera. And a couple of things might help him, we ran into this years ago, the things that nobody bothered to tell you, and it's not enough transition, but like the man had the concern about the one-inch water line on Hearn Hill, well, there's another one, Woodbury Forest, and I don't know if that'll ever be annexed or what, but none of those people have ever had any water pressure. It is town water, I don't know, you knew about the Woodbury Forest a lot.
Yeah.
The gentleman told you about the Hearn Hill in that last meeting I attended. Couple of other things that would, might be helpful to him, and he knows this, and Mr. Messi knows more about it than I do, but as some of you may know, we once had a railroad here, and the old railroad line that goes south toward Moncture, it goes behind Powell Place, they don't call it Powell Place, I went to Potterstone.
Potterstone.
I said Powell Place, I meant Potterstone, it was made for them. That railroad line, there's something about that that you need to, somebody needs to look up. I can't remember exactly what it is, I don't know whether it was supposed to be part of this tobacco trail, or what it was, but it was some kind of division, and then on the far side of it was land that a attorney born and raised here, but lives in Atlanta, Georgia now, so I'm told. His family at one time had a lot of industrial, property zone industrial up there, and they got real upset enough to send a lawyer to a meeting one time, because they were concerned about what might happen with that. Now, all I'm saying is that there needs to be a little, for lack of a better term, historical research, and I guess Mr. Jones is going to do it, with this various property, and how you might change it, you know, as you look toward the future.
Yes, I think members of the board have also run across various things that were inconsistent through the years, that we've all sort of stored them up and waited to say, we're going to revise that when we do the UDO.
I just thought maybe that might be, and I had one other thing, 87 and the old 87 are state highways, and we have a state resident engineer in Ashville, I wonder if he would be willing to at least look at your problems, or the better if you're concerned about traffic concern, as opposed to hiring some outside firm.
That's an excellent suggestion.
He might be able to make some suggestions. They bailed us out once before, this is not baiting out, but a former town manager overspent $60 million, $6 billion, or whatever, on a plan for that little bit of sidewalk between 64 and that roundabout you were talking about, and whatever it was, $60,000, and the state got so concerned, they took it over, they built that part of the sidewalk, we didn't build it. Bless them for doing it. And they might be willing, that takes some concern about that road, which I have no interest in it as far as I even know about it to the night, but I did think that that engineer might be willing to help with the situation, both the town and whoever these folks are that are trying to do the daycare center. Just a couple of things that I remember, because I came through here about the time Cornwallis did, so I remember some of these. Anyway, just thought I'd throw that out, and one more little bit of thing, you talk about monies we spent, one of the officials in Texas tonight said that some of those people couldn't have evacuated if they had been told to, because so many of those families didn't have $500 in cash ahead, so they could have done that. And I would go so far to say, when we look at spending county and town, a lot of families here may not have $500 ahead if they had to have a new set of tires or whatever, so at risk of being an old curmudgeon and always holding on to the money, I do think that you've got a real challenge there in meeting all of these things. And even though that lady didn't care for what I had to say on my wife last week, whatever it was, but she had a good point, and this gentleman spoke to it too, whatever monies you're going to get from these folks that are coming, remember General Sherman, and get it first. That was a good idea. Get the money. Water is an asset, all these other things are assets, and I know how important water is. 1968, before any of y'all were born, I once rode across the town pond when it was dry in a Volkswagen, it was dry as oil, and there was no water in it, and the United States Army hauled water in here so Pittsburgh would have a drink of water. Army tankers did, 1968, I believe was the year, and so it is such a precious resource, and it wouldn't get to be more so. And I have overstayed my welcome and my comments, but thank you for being patient enough to listen to me.
We thank you for your many years of service to this board, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is the branch ordinance. Ryan Presbeck is going to lead us in this particular matter.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'll do my best. To recall back in the July meeting, we had discussed ordinance that had been recently allowed by general statute, the change in general statute to open up serving and consumption of alcohol by licensed premises beginning earlier than 10 a.m. We discussed some of the findings and some of the work that's been done at the state level, and ultimately, I don't remember whether it was consensus or whether the board elected, but there was a decision made to push the discussion back to this meeting on August 28th tonight. You have before you tonight the, basically, the same material that we had looked at on the date of July 24th with regard to the ordinance, article from Code Canons, and the memo that I wrote at the time. The only other things that I guess I would point out with regard to, you know, any updates or changes since then, there have been, right, wrong, or indifferent, a number of communities around the state that have moved forward on the ordinance, and I think 102 cities have approved, 102 cities and counties have actually approved a similar ordinance in 22 cities and counties, including Pittsburgh. and counties, counties including Pittsburgh have the issue on the agenda, or an upcoming agenda, the county apparently is, is considering also a similar ordinance, I think they're kind of waiting to find out what, what we do, I think as I point out in one of the memos that the ordinance, any ordinance that the county would pass doesn't necessarily have any overriding feature for an ordinance that we would, so if we kept our ordinance the same way, the same provisions regarding serving times for alcohol, if the county elected to pass an ordinance which opened it up, license premises for other parts of the county at earlier, at earlier time on Sundays, the town wouldn't be bound to those, to those changes, so, so there's a little bit of flexibility involved there, so, at any rate, you have it before you, we've held the public, or we have not needed to hold a public hearing in order to adopt the ordinance, tonight we can discuss review and tact as appropriate, and without I will open up any comments, questions, consensus.
Other questions, hold on.
I don't really have any questions, I know we brought up at the last meeting about the economic plus for this, I guess you pretty much, if you're here at this meeting, you know I'm not in favor of it, and still am not, I don't really feel like a, a Sunday brunch is gonna bring a whole lot of, a whole lot of economic development to the town of Pittsburgh, down the road, when we have other these restaurants, hotels, or whatever, may be necessary, but I just don't see right now the great economic development that we'll get out of selling alcohol at ten o'clock on Sunday morning, and that's pretty much, I mean, and it's my opinion, some people say, you know, government, state, religion, all shouldn't go together, but that's my opinion, and I would not support it.
All right, other opinions, other thoughts?
I, I personally still don't like that idea of doing that on Sunday morning, that I really do not personally like that, I pursue, receive numerous emails from people which indicated that they, business owners and others which indicated they would like for this to go forward, so, basically, I have received a few that they know were not interested in that, but they were not, you know, business owners here, but most of the business owners that know the information that I've received, they indicated that they would like for me to go forward with this, but again, personally, I do not agree with you.
Thank you, other thoughts?
Well, I'll just address one of Jay's comments about economic development, and I think that having spoken to several business owners in downtown, and having been part of the Main Street program, and attending the PBA meetings for the last eight years, there's been a common theme, and that is knowing that Chatham Park is coming, and doing everything that we can to make downtown vibrant, and this is another avenue that these folks see that they can provide service to folks who want it, that a lot of people really enjoy a Sunday brunch with a Bloody Mary, or a mimosa, or something, and it is a real attraction to those folks who want to take that time on Sunday morning, Sunday afternoon, and enjoy a good meal and a, a drink, and so, I think it's a good opportunity for downtown to maintain, a, the position ahead of the curve when it comes to Chatham Park, I think that we all know that it's, it's building right now, and will continue, and so, that's why this thought on the one aspect of what you presented about economic development, I think it's a good opportunity to say it.
Other thoughts, or is there a motion?
I'll make a question for you.
Second. Moved by Michael Fiocco, seconded by Betwell and Foley, is there further discussion?
I'll add, I'll chime in as well, this is, I think, one of those, it may be a case study for the kinds of changes that we as a town are gonna be going through, and, very much like the, the Town Hall, I think, the debate over Town Hall that I'm hearing, my concern is similar to what Commissioner Fiocco has articulated from the, kind of the business owner's perspective, but as a father of two young kids, resident in Chatham Forest, which is relatively walkable to downtown areas, my concern about this town is that we keep the businesses that are already in town vibrant, alive, profitable, while, in the very near term, forty-four acres gets developed, which is right across the street from the high school, and I'm sure they're going to be bringing in some restaurants that will be very attractive, shiny, new buildings, and I'm concerned that, that our businesses downtown are gonna have trouble competing and creating that kind of economic draw that, I see it as gravity, we're gonna have a whole new center of gravity just outside of the, the bypass, and people are gonna have a choice to take their business up there, or to come back down to the, to the cute quaint downtown Pittsburgh, and the revenues are not gonna come from those of us who live here, the revenues are gonna come from newcomers, and young folks, young bloods, and they're the kind of folks who like to have a mixed drink with brunch, and I don't think that they're rabble-rousers, I think that they're probably gonna be good people, I think eventually they'll find the town attractive enough that they might wanna settle here, or spend more of their money here, I hope, and so this is the kind of thing that I, I'm inclined to support because I, I hear it from the business owners, and I'm sympathetic, frankly, to concerns, Commissioner Baldwin, Commissioner Farrell, I'm very much sympathetic to this concerns, it's, it's not our tradition, but I think we need it to stay competitive and to keep the downtown vibrant, so, I plan to support the motion.
I didn't say I wasn't gonna support the motion, I just said that personally, I didn't want it.
I understand that situation.
Anything further?
If I could just make one comment, maybe it's a bit over obvious, but this pertains to all of Pittsburgh in that particular, it's not particular to one area or company.
That's exactly right.
That's the thing too, Mr. Brown, I agree with that, with that you've expressed, and also they, we're hoping to attract a hotel here, and I think, make this very attractive to a hotel, which we do need. Is the board ready to vote? Those in favor of the motion made by Michael Fiocco, seconded by Betwell and Foley?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries, four to one, thank you. On our agenda, we did not have, I should, so when would that take effect?
But, it's, effective, effective, I, hey.
There's a blank on it.
I'll let you say different just today, huh?
Today?
Yeah.
Okay. Initially, our agenda carried no new business, but we've carried forward a consent item on timber allocation requests for capital-ready mixed concrete, so, Mr. Fiocco, you need to issue about that.
I know that I had some questions, I think everyone called that I had some questions during our budget session about fees, and when they'll be applied, and so, this has come along, and I saw several opportunities in here to explore the ideas that might form a new policy, so, Paul, you did not take any action on the budget at the time, and you said that you had pulled together a new policy, so I see opportunities here to have that discussion, and so, I wanted to do that, and so, questions, maybe for Mr. Jones, perhaps for Mr. Roy, and the first question is, why is this allocation required?
I'll, I'll try to take a stab at it, anytime a new use to a existing structure, which is this the case, comes into play, like postal seafood is another example, we look at what sewer use they had, and what that would be equivalent to in our, in the two-T rules of the state, in this case, if I'm thinking correctly, they presented a office space with X number of employees, full-time, and they presented that information, and we looked at what was there before, to the best of our knowledge, we knew they had one domestic bathroom, I didn't discover how many people worked there or whatnot, so, we basically took what they presented to us and said, okay, this is gonna be a new viable office space, so let's just go with that in terms of the two-T rules, which I think it turned out to be fifteen hundred gallons a day, based on their number of employees, in this case, we, we could be talked, we, we could be, if, if evidence came up that said, well, we actually had three employees at the old building, and here's the evidence, and, which that did happen at the postal seafood, we, we mistook how many employees used to work at the post office, and we went back and did some math, and reduced the amount to give them whatever they're reduced, might have been thirteen hundred gallons a day, so that, that's how we arrived, but that's how they arrived at this number, and we approved, recommending.
You, you were thinking along those lines of netting, having a net equation, okay, okay, that's really helpful.
Sure.
So, does this request include the proposed warehouse and office building?
Yes, there's no warehouse that I'm aware of at this point, it's just an office building.
Demo makes, what is the warehouse and office?
That's been the other, that's been the other, and inflation, isn't it?
So, if anybody's driven past the site, they're demoing certain parts of the building, they're rehabbing or plan to rehab other parts of the building to create this flex space, that could work for it, it could either be segmented out to an office, or a small incubator, or cold storage, that's what the buildings are gonna be set for, and that's what this request is for, general office at the, at the time, at the moment, if a request came in for something that generated more allocation need, we would be back before you, they really feel like this is gonna be long-term storage, or cold storage, the potential of some small office space in there that would accommodate the, the request tonight, and I think the request is just for the buildings, the concrete plant itself, there is no request for that.
So, if they're not mixing concrete, what would they do with their experience?
Yeah, I think they are mixing concrete.
Okay, so it's probably they would need more water for it.
Well, it's, it's water going into the, into the concrete truck, but water not coming in.
Right, and not coming back to the superplant.
That's right.
A right way to work, right?
Right. And there is a system that staff's been working with, the applicant on, of when the truck washes out, and how that can be filtered through basins to, to make sure that that, that's taken care of without going into sanitary sewer as well, so, in reality, what we're looking at is for the, the buildings itself, not the concrete plant, and staff feels like this is a good time to do, do this, because I have, they may come in for zoning compliance, for an outfit of this space to warehouse housing, or storage, or an office space, and we want to be assured that, yes, we can get forward with this zoning compliance, because we've already allotted this amount for you.
So then, I think I hear you saying that this allocation does not require construction of any new building?
No.
Okay. So, when they come in with a site plan for warehouse and office, they would conceivably be making another request for an allocation?
If it was beyond the limits of what you, you all may get tonight.
Well, I'm thinking, you know, it's a reasonable calculation, sixteen employees, yeah, but if more personnel are gonna be associated with these other buildings, then they'll be making another.
That's right, that's right, okay.
Because one of the, the things I was trying to understand is, were we, typically, we've been providing an allocation with a site plan, so we're saying, all right, these things go together in one site plan, that's fine, there's the allocation, so I wanted to know if this was for a site plan that was coming, and did we need to put a timeline on that as well?
What I think this will do is forever ensure this property, these buildings, have allocation up to fifteen hundred gallons, and staff does a well enough job that years from now, there's questions about who has what, this will be on the books, and fifteen hundred is what they're supposed to have, and that's what they'll have.
We've got a lot of buildings that will have no record.
Exactly.
So, that's part of all the worries, I was, I was foolish in having this conversation, I appreciate that, but indulging me in that, but, that I like most of the group of ideas.
I'd just point out to you, this, this has got nothing to do with fees that are being paid, and if this is not used, then it stays on the books forever, like you said, and is not being used, and will not be available for other people to use as well.
Understood.
Motion by Michael Fiocco, seconded by Jay Wilk, that's right, Jay.
Thank you, Jay. They call a lot worse.
Is there any further discussion?
I have just one thing I like to say, it's got a lot, I've talked to a couple of people that work down there, and if you guys haven't been by there, or anybody needs to go to my seat, the worker that's dealing, has been doing to improve it, you spend a lot of money, and I hope the town can move forward to get them open ASAP, I think I've expressed that quite a bit, because they do have plans on employing at least forty employees down the road, and it is a noticeable improvement on the Pittsburgh Moncture rate.
Great. If there's a motion, those in favor, please give a hand, I.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Managers update on projects, Ryan Respekt.
Yes, Mayor, some question, that may maybe staff can answer while you're having that conversation, if we have old buildings that come before the board, are, are we gonna go back in time and see that they changed in use, so if you had a building that was used as a restaurant, then became a roller skating rink, then became a law office, then became something else, what's the town's perceived policy on what the allocation was, where, where do we draw the line when someone's coming in on these older? Where do we draw the line when someone's coming in on these older buildings versus a greenfield site? And two, on this particular case, I'm curious why we didn't, if we looked at just the water usage, because it was always our impression that when they, before they were annexed into town, they were discharging to their, to their permitted discharge at a chicken plant. I wasn't aware that they actually had a connection to the town, but maybe they did and that was just something that was, you know, was separate from the rest. I mean, that may have been the case, but...
Yep, Joe.
I mean, Jeff, I'm just kind of curious on that question because I know you're in a tough go with all these old buildings, like what do you tell somebody about their building? At one time, it may have had an intense use, it might have been a pizzeria, but then they went out of business and then it becomes like a flea, a flea market and then what, where do we draw the line on what the usage was tributary to the plant?
Yeah, so, just thinking out right now, I think we could go with the most intense use documented, intense use.
Okay.
So, if we can document that it was a restaurant that had this many seats, yeah, I think we would give that, that building that credit. Otherwise, we wouldn't go back to just the last use because again, that's going to throw off the numbers a little bit potentially.
I appreciate the answer because with the Main Street program, Mayor, a lot of people ask that question and they don't have a clear answer as to what the allocation would be, but some of these buildings have changed so many times that it's hard to tell. Thank you very much, Joe, for your participation.
Thank you. Brian Griesbeck?
Thanks, Jim, Madam Mayor. We, if we could just give you some updates on a few projects here real quick. New town hall, as we discussed, obviously we'd like to dump the Mauch building in 2018 if that is at all possible, but currently an ongoing and before that, as you're aware, we have received proposals, the space needs assessment in the building design and discussed briefly before that the space needs assessments to kind of help determine what kind of space that the town and staff would need on that site as far as moving forward with operations. Also too, involved in that conversation with the county, Chatham County, of course, is in need of some space and the town has certainly not had a fit from increased collaboration with the county. We're currently kind of sharing a lot of meetings as it is and they have space needs and so I think we've got some generation of efficiencies on that moving forward, but we still have to go through the, work through the process of determining what those efficiencies are. To help with that determination, right now, in the process of sorting through the seven proposals that we received and exercising some diligence, and ideally what I'd like to do is after I've had the chance to talk with, talk with and ask some questions of the proposals, bring, bring back a possible recommendation to the town board or some go-ahead to negotiate a contract with the design consultant and I'd be ideally looking to do that on September 11th during our regular meeting. If, once we have a contract with the architect, which could, could happen shortly thereafter, I think we'll take the information that we've, you know, that we've received to this point, start this meeting with staff, meeting with, meeting with town and county, but also beginning an interim, as I mentioned before, an interim process with the community at large to kind of, to kind of help determine what kind of the town hall and what kind of public space that the community wants and needs. For that reason, we don't have, the board is very correct tonight in saying that, you know, it's, it's not twenty million dollars, but we don't have, we don't have a figure on that identified yet because we've got a little bit of work to do to get to that point. So, I can, I can assure you, it's not twenty mil, whatever it comes out to, I have a hard time believing it's going to be a twenty million dollar facility in any case. So, again, we look forward to doing that. I mentioned later in my proposal, I'll skip around, I'll skip ahead just a little bit, I mentioned later in my updates that, that I'll be meeting and presenting with Triangle J regional managers, with county, Chatham County's manager tomorrow at lunchtime here at the new agricultural center. And the focus of that presentation is collaboration with the county on downtown issues and they were looking for an example of counties and downtowns that have worked together and they thought of, they thought of Pittsburgh. So, so I think, you know, whether we intended to collaborate or whether we, you know, whether we needed to collaborate or whether we just decided it would be a good idea, I think that, that's all true. We, we need to collaborate with the county and the county needs to collaborate with us. And so, we've, you know, we've kind of identified some areas, this being one of them, that we're starting to work together on. The county and part of, part of my, I guess, message to be, to my colleagues is that, you know, in our case, being a county seat and really historically being a county seat, I think there were, I think there were British colonial governmental operations in Pittsburgh before there was actually the United States of America. So, we have, we have that history ever since there's been history and we depend on that, on that, on the county being here economically, socially, employment-wise. And so, it's in our interest to, you know, to kind of collaborate that way and since the spine of county's governmental operations are located downtown, then we focused a lot of those energies on helping to maintain and improve the downtown. Again, I think this is another example of that happening, that's at least how we've, I think, kind of gotten to this point. But I'm going to be mentioning some other things like the pocket park and some of the Main Street connectivity and so I'll look forward to giving some feedback to you on that.
Brian, how many do you have?
It's tomorrow, right?
Yeah, but it's, I mean, it's for regional managers, but, I mean, you're welcome to listen.
I didn't lose my...
You're not cool enough to come to that.
I got it.
I hear you. Sorry, you lost.
I'm kidding.
What time are you doing?
I'm gonna, I think it's, I think we start shaking hands about eleven thirty.
Okay.
So, yeah, I mean, if you do show up, I'll point to you and say...
He wasn't invited to show up anyway.
Downtown DMP is another, another thing we've got, obviously going on, that we're kind of wrapping up and I don't, Fred hasn't had any comments on it, but the light poles have been installed, the brick, I added a couple of different pictures than the ones you have in your packet. You can see up here at the top, that's a better look, I think, of the brick patio. I guess I'll call it for lack of a better way to put it, that was installed and then I don't really have a good shot of, I don't have a good shot, or I did include a good shot of, of the asphalt. A lot of asphalt has been here, but there's more of it. So, the parking lot, parking lot's paved, I believe it is striped right now, Fred?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And then we're looking at planting in the fall of 2017. And something that Fred and I talked about as well, and it hasn't really, speaking of Main Street and downtown business owners, really the community at large too, I know we've discussed in previous meetings, the possibility for park benches along the sidewalk, along East Street. You're aware that we don't have any currently anticipated right away in this project. I think in terms of possible memorials, donations, this is as good a spot as there any, as there is of any in town. If somebody wants to memorialize a loved one, this is going to be as visible of a park, of a bench as you can possibly find. So, I think, I, you know, if you guys have any ideas on that, we're more than, more than welcome, you're more than welcome to speak up and we'll work post-case to get, to get something done on that. So, we have, we would want to be using some exist, we would want to be using the existing standard of park bench, I guess, that we have in our downtown. So, you know, it would have to kind of fit, kind of fit that, that form and designing and so...
Do you have any idea how much they cost?
They're about twelve hundred dollars.
I think it's big downtown dimensions, of course, the Main Street program, the DOT, Killian, we all worked really hard on this area and one of these days we hoped that asphalt is not asphalt, it's actually paper, it's something more comfortable for veterans to gather in at the civic center or civic area. And in the middle of that brick patio, there was the idea of tree and the worst public art and Main Street program had spoken with the artist guild about possibly collaborating with something artistic there as well. So, hopefully when the DOT project gets going, we can make these improvements in this corner as well as the northeast corner.
What's concerning, I have is that I stopped by there the other day and the concrete things are fairly low without the plants there, I'm pretty sure they're going to fall off. Is that a concern that anybody else has or that's...
I think they're at least six inches tall, curb height, which is, I don't know that...
They're a little higher than six in some areas, so...
One of them, yeah, one of them is.
What's the plant scenario, it'll be more of a...
Yeah, I agree, once when there's a plant, there's issues that didn't meet on that.
Well, right before the eclipse, there were a lot of folks sitting on them, waiting for the voice order to open.
Well, they were waiting to go buy glasses. And so, we saw immediately, ah, pretty useful.
And do I see a dark sky friendly cutoff fixture on that light pole?
We copied the Paige Vernon Park designs, acorn top, so yeah, I guess it is.
It's got blacktop.
Yes, it is.
Metal, probably, yes. Cool.
They're LED.
Yeah, the questions on that, I just, I just point out a couple other things here real quick. We have also, I included, I think something that Jeff and Victoria have been living by and are going to be doing in the future and it's kind of hot off the crest, but this, this kind of, I think, helps provide a little bit of, a little bit of background and scheduling for how the department is, in the town is, is processing plans and how they're, they're going to be moving forward and it is on, this is made available to people when asked, but it's also on our town website in the, in the planning department corner of our web, webpage, website. Jeff, if you've got any other comments, I want to check out the spot.
You can just follow along from the, from the column, Paul, it's the idea of the developer self or applicant, of when they need to do a concept plan or a pre-semital meeting, submit on the day of, and you can see today, next, or middle day, and then you can see how, how that plan will carry through until it reaches your, your packet and the steps that staff and the applicant goes through, multiple reviews to get something in front of us. I think this is working well, we've been using this version. We've had others in the past, but this is the most refined that we've gotten it. We've been using it for the past two semitals cycles and it's working well at both the pre-semital meetings and the, that second phase column, the developer conference and staff. We're including all the review staff, including planning, engineering, parks, fire, everybody comes together at one meeting, we can talk to the applicant and everybody can have their comments addressed or discussed so the applicant can go back on the initial review and make the changes as discussed or as written. The idea is that that first set of comments that go, that goes to the applicant is the most intensive, they're going to have a lot more comment on that one instead of setting their review. So, we want to sit down with them, with all the reviewers at one time. Staff is also, that doesn't show up on these, on this calendar, which is an internal calendar that has more columns, and then comments are due, the theory, and then content, and when we ask staff, we actually meet, the first review is three weeks long. That second week, the reviewers have had the plans on their desk to review, we meet as staff to go over, well, what are you, what are you seeing in your initial review? And that way, planning is outside, is off the bench, engineering and vice versa, we can, when people win, oh, we're seeing this, you might want to take a look at it during the remaining part of the review cycle. It's helping us try to get a better product to you all and a better process for the applicant. And I think it's working and we'll, we'll, we'll have to see, but I'm hearing positive things from all the departments and, and hopefully we'll hear positive things from the developer community as well.
I think the developer conference is fantastic because so often, what ends up happening is we all end up in silence, thinking just this, just this, but when you get together with the fire department, you get together with engineering, you go, oh, we are kind of contradicting each other, let's figure out what it is we want as a town. So, I think it's fantastic.
Yeah. But it's, it's working and I'm sure there'll be revisions to it, but right now, I think, I think everybody's pretty happy with it.
Thanks. Yeah, the other, a couple other things I'll mention, a couple other things I'll mention, I'm sorry, Jeff, I looked like you were pointing your...
Well, I'm like, wow, I haven't seen the tower.
That is, that is our, yeah, that is our soon-to-be tower. That's a drone shot actually from, from the tower. The, it's under, it's under construction right now. The, that's my bullet with regard to the north side water system improvements, which is, I'm going to construct the tower as well as new, new watering, the overall effect will be to increase water, much-needed water pressure in that, in that area. Town, you know, have a benefit obviously to some of our existing segments, but also to provide water to some of the new construction that's going down to the north side. That, again, is, is being constructed with, with Chatham Park funds right now. I don't see Mr. and Mrs. Brooks in the audience anymore at this point in time, but I'm sure they'd be interested in hearing that. The electrical vehicle charging station proposals, proposal was collected on August 18th, it was originally sent to ten different, ten different possible vendors, also made available on our website. Proposal I received wasn't really complete, so right now we're in the process of evaluating whether or not I want to kind of cast the net out again and wider or circle back with the one proposal that I've received and try to, try to maybe smoke out some additional detail on that. So, but I'm interested in moving that, moving that forward. The Sanford Force May Guarantee, we have some, we have Davenport working on and overview for your benefit. What I'd like to do is schedule some time, maybe in, before we can, before we can address this at large, schedule some time with, maybe in small groups with, or try to kind of tackle it. There's some issues with regard to, I would say issues, but there are some, some overviews of financial projections that we want to do and we want to really have a back-and-forth discussion on that, it might be easier to digest in that, in that format. So, I'd like to circle back with you on that. We've also got Davenport taking a look at an issue that came up in the last meeting, which was trying to somehow come up with a later value, the NPDS discharge issue, it's kind of a unique situation, but we're, we're having them kind of set the parameters, maybe take a stab at it. Again, we can cast a net wider on that as well. The dam, the, at the, the Bynum River Dam that's come up in the, in the past, staff has filed permission from, from the feds to get a look at the dam's safety inspection records that were, that were obtained by a private, by a private holder. The, apparently FERC needs to provide that approval before the town can actually look at, apparently, what kind of, what kind of condition the dam is in. And I believe today we found out that they, FERC had received the application accounts or waiting to hear when we can actually get a look at those dam safety inspection, I say, the dam safety inspection records and I mean that the best possible way. So, I apologize, I'm trying to be clever.
Can I interrupt very briefly?
Please do.
Question, does that, did that application process or does that get us in the direction of what I've heard referred to as critical infrastructure program, excuse me, critical
I've heard referred to as critical infrastructure program, excuse me, critical infrastructure protection program? Has this, I've heard it's in certification.
Yeah, we've applied to that certification.
Very good.
And all of the records are correct, so now it's, it's all in the report, so review it and get back to us.
We can't, I mean, we can't even look at anything until the feds, which seems counter to it.
It's critical infrastructure. They don't want that guy looking at it.
I guess not. We're just trying to fit in, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, East Cornwallis Street, again, trying to, trying to get with staff, there's been some staff turnover at DOT, I've had some, I've had some back and forth with them on that as well. I think, I think we heard during one of Mr. Brooks's input sessions tonight, we heard him talk about a railway of some sort that was part of the back trail. There is, I did actually, when I was looking at some property records along, because one of our staffs has identified the property holders along East Cornwallis, and when I was identifying, was I did find actually some property that was identified on the tax map as tobacco trail, which is kind of, I don't know. It looks like, it looks like it's adjacent to, it's adjacent to Powderstone, which I think is kind of interesting. I didn't really think much of it until Mr. Brooks mentioned it, so it's kind of interesting. I'd like to make sure that he thought that.
Is all railroads closed, it's not got anything to do with tobacco trail?
It's, it's labeled tobacco trail.
Okay.
Wasn't that conceived as a greenway?
Sorry?
I think it was conceived as a greenway.
Trail to trails.
No, it wasn't. It was before that law came into effect.
I mean, the tax records identify, yet there's a, there's a, there's some domination out there, the first tobacco trail becoming attachment.
It's all reverted to private ownership.
It was some sort of a state statute that reverted back to the original owner. I've got a section of what was going to be the Greensboro Railroad system going through my property on Millersborough Street, so, but, yeah.
Auditors are here, in fact, they were, they were sitting right up here in front of me all day today, I think they'll be here through maybe Thursday or so, it's a little bit earlier than normal, they had a workers' comp audit they were working on as well, so, so it's, work on that will continue. I mentioned county manager and I, and maybe even Commissioner Fioke, dealing with the Triangle J Regional Manager, is it the Ag building, like the Ag building? And also too, also too, there are some discussion, please recall, this is a reminder, the additional elements workshop dates, the 21st and October 5th, and if I'm not mistaken, those are scheduled out at the Chatham Park offices at 8:30, and they didn't put on here, but I believe 8:30 in the morning those are starting, so on the center otherwise, that's, that's a reminder. And Mayor indicated that a meeting with, with, with regards to fire and the county could, may very well be forthcoming, will discuss a number of issues. I actually did meet with the fire chief and county manager today, and there's, there's some issues we've got to sort through, not, not in particular, aren't necessarily in particular at Chatham Park, although we need to deal with that as well, but kind of taking a look at, taking a look at things like their fire district versus the way that we currently are built, or the town is currently built, Fire Protection Services, looking at how annexations are handled, and yeah, future needs of the fire department, so there's going to be a comment on that too, so. So much, much another. With that, oh, one other thing, upcoming meetings, I've squeezed in one more, I've squeezed in one more date there, so we're trying to, we're trying to take a look at four, four dates, and it kind of blows my mind that we're already, that if we go four dates forward, we're into the end of October.
Thank you.
So where did the summer go, right?
Yeah.
But again, these are very, these are preliminary, obviously September 11, I'm looking a little bit more definite than some of the latter dates, so some of this is fluid, some of this is a little bit less fluid, so. If anybody has any questions about upcoming agenda items or how this kind of evolves until the actual agenda comes out, please don't hesitate to ask, say, you know, Brian, what's going on, this upcoming, you got with that, like on the agenda, that's always choice something we can work on too as well, so. With that, I promise I'm done.
Looks like we have a busy time there.
Yes.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Bruce Beck. I, I want to say I very much appreciate having the four meeting perspective, and also I agree with Mayor, it's, it's going to be a busy meeting in September 11th. We have a clean, clean tech cluster presentation that Mayor has arranged, and I very much respect that you want to have them give us a briefing on these technologies because they're really important, understanding energy efficiency and so on and so forth, but I'm wondering if it might be more timely for us to use that particular time slot to ask for a reminder, refresher briefing from the Conservation Ordinance Review Committee. The reason being twofold, the UDO, I was looking through that today, and the tree, tree protection elements in, in the UDO, excuse me, elements is the wrong word, the bad, and open space and some other things, as well as the Chatham Park additional elements on stormwater, open space, tree, tree cover protection landscape. I think it'd be very useful for us to get a reminder of the high quality work that this board commissioned to be done, one or a half, with that Conservation Ordinance Review Committee.
I'd like to hear that as well, because this is a group that was given the task of coming up with a recommendation, and it'd be great to hear that again just before our work session on the subject, so I would like to get that on the agenda as well.
Should we move that clean tech cluster presentation to 27th September, or our-
If you think RTCC would be willing to plus.
Yeah.
Bring on their availability.
Or even on October 9th.
Yeah, let's have a, let's do that, and let's talk today and see what we can do.
I greatly appreciate that.
And I'll reach out to Catherine, if I have anything.
She was here just earlier, but no, she's not here. Are we ready for Commissioner concerns? Jay?
Mr. Bruce Beck, on the East Cornwallis Street, do you have any idea if this possibly be paid?
I was, I was told by DOT at one point that yes, they would be willing to pay them.
Do you have any timeframe?
Not yet.
If you let me know, I can get-
We'll do some various-
...... houses weekly. Another thing, I just, I saw in the Southern City Magazine, some signs regarding some public parking, I think it's been jokingly admitted to me that it was mighty nice of the town to buy a city cat leg and park a lot over there, but I think we need to get some type of parking city, I mean, public parking signs. I know you can't make a left turn at light, but either up at Thompson Street, Hank Street, and either have some coming north, and you come from the north coming south, and the town even turn right, some type of parking sign to let people know that it's public parking.
Okay, any, what we have to do is, is probably anything that we have on 15501 or 60, any directional signage that we have on 1551 or 64, we're gonna have to work through DOT on that.
Sure.
We're gonna have to, which I mean, we can look, we can look at where and place those signs, I guess, I want to try to avoid that, those, but-
I mean, I meant to bring this, but it was in the Southern City, it was in Apex actually, and where we have our Fourth of July celebrate, Fourth of July celebration banners and the Christmas banners, that's how they had their public parking signs on the light post.
Okay.
So that might be an idea to go around that. I meant to bring the picture with me, I overlooked it, but it's just something maybe get-
So directional signage showing where the-
It had public parking in it with a right angle, right turn.
Right.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Beth?
First of all, I just want to say how much I appreciate the, your manager report, they're, they're, they really appreciate the visuals and the, the thing ahead, really, so that's great. On the subject of the downtown V and T, oh, my dream was I wanted to add something besides benches, and that is an information sign that explains what that is, so that it's a message in town, and to me, it's really reflects well on the town and helps people understand what the project is about, and we have money for that thing, and a lot of that. I don't know if you all read the NC recent county report, I started reading, I just wanted to point out in case you all did read it, that there was a passage of a bill that provided grants to downtown development projects. So I don't know if you're interested, but there's a lot of good information there, so yeah. Here, that's all I have.
Michael?
I think in our last meeting, there was FYI on the water shortage, and the plan, we talked about reviewing it in greater depth, and didn't see it on our look ahead, so just wondering if, what our thoughts are on that.
Just need to add the way we can put it on future.
Paintwork installation, you can go on that, so maybe a violation or something.
Right. What do you mean? I briefly touched on some of the issues and said, well, there were more issues, we talked about it in another meeting, so.
Yeah, the time I put the, the time I put it together, I had, the time I put the agenda together, I hadn't gotten with Fred on that particular issue, so I didn't put it in this particular agenda, and so I thought I'd just circle back with Fred before I had it into, again, this intended schedule of things that, you know, this, this upcoming meeting piece is intended in that.
Yeah, I have the schedule, and so I'm, I'm sure we can, you know, if, if, if you're, if you're comfortable, yeah, staff can go ahead, I think, I think Fred did have some follow-up, I talked to him about it today, we can certainly put that in the next consent agenda on the 11th, you can review it, it looks great, we can approve it, and then pull it or postpone it, whatever you need. Yeah, I think I have some commentary on it, so.
Okay, if you have any, let us know, we have a meeting ahead of time.
Yeah.
Fine.
Okay.
Well, the last meeting, when the residents from Creekside came, I was quite concerned with that information they submitted to us, and what I was thinking about, because I think the office they had did to their ordinance is regarding rental property and the possibility of having an ordinance or a policy that actually can inspect those properties and see if they are in compliance or not in compliance, and if that policy had something similar to that, I was wondering if that could be investigated as well.
One of the things, Steve, here on, on September 11th meeting, that I have scheduled is a presentation for a purpose of making some sort of formal final acceptance of affordable rental housing reports that Triangle J presented, that Aspen and Julia presented at one of our last meetings. So I think, you recall from the committee meetings, that that was a concept that got a lot of traction, I think, and I think they could, they can talk a little bit more about that, I'll be sure to remind them to incorporate that up as far as maybe a way going forward on that, so, I think at the next meeting we can hear more about that.
You have a problem that there weren't any standards, that we would actually need to create standards?
Yeah, since you talked to me, they found out that there weren't any standards.
I didn't take the opportunity at the time, Mr. Messick, but I was curious if that was an accurate reflection, I mean, is, is their research on our website true, that we don't have any standards for window screens or other safety, health and safety things in rental housing?
I must confess, I'm not familiar with what's on the website or not, but I doubt seriously that there is anything on there, but the town does have a minimum housing code.
Minimum housing code?
Yeah, it's been in effect for 30 years.
And I guess that's basically what I've heard described as a roof and four walls and, they have a furnace.
I think it's more than that, it's habitable dwelling.
And a block storage apartment as well?
All, all apartment.
Now, what, what, what Triangle J at least is, is talking about in their, in their travels is that, actually, maybe what a black, what a, an actual sort of inspection certification process specific to rental housing, kind of, apart from the very basics sort of, you know, minimum housing standards that we have, we have followed through the force of the county level, so. We would want to try maybe tailoring something if, if we go in this direction, that's specific towards actually reviewing rental housing and, you know, monitoring that, there's some sort of informants in some way, so they have some ideas, I'm, I'm sure they'll have some ideas on.
And perhaps they can also talk about policy decisions at this time, I know they do have a lot of them. So the other thing, second, the other thing was that, if one part of the children needs some repair, there are those blocks, the black blocks that's on the ground, they are coming apart. Yeah, they're coming apart, so those children definitely there and just definitely need to play with it, so he could just, they'll be great. That's all I have right now, thank you.
Yes, thank you. The, the language again, Mr. Messick, on the, what we have that's 30 years old?
It's called the minimum housing code.
Minimum housing code. Thank you. And Mr. Bruce Beck, I'm really pleased to hear that we've had seven proposals on the new town hall, and as you're reviewing those, I would request that you give some consideration, maybe even a little extra weight to those firms that have a demonstrated history, perhaps the, the longer the history, the better, in energy efficiency. I'm, I'm finding that numbers of lead certified professionals is something that's often cited, and I don't think that that's a very good metric of the kind of depth of experience that actually allows one to save energy in designing a building. But that's something else to consider, of course, so.
I'd be right getting to a local level if they need.
Yeah, and, and again, you can review what we put out as far as in our request for publication on the town's website, but the language I use, just because I, I don't know any better, it's familiarity, it's kind of familiarity with lead certification. Now, if we, you know, we can go maybe a little bit deeper based on your, but I can try to dig a little bit deeper on that, and yeah, local knowledge of local, I think, knowledge described was, you know, knowledge of, knowledge and experience, local, is something in my mind is very critical, you know, try to, try to fit with what's been done effectively in knowing the community, I think can be very important, I think.
That'd be great. It, it is definitely true, isn't it, that the earlier energy features and function performance is considered in the design process, the cheaper the product will be, its price tag, and generally the more efficiency savings one gets, when thinking through those things really coherently from the very beginning. Thank you.
Okay.
If there's nothing further, is there a motion to adjourn?
I have one question, I'm sorry. Did we lose any parking places in that corner?
In the, in the parking lot, no. There's, there were nine, so there are nine. On the, on the part that's up against the curb, they were there, but they were like six feet long, they weren't technically parking stalls.
Is that in front of the toy store, I mean, the van's music store?
No, it was over by the bank.
Okay.
But on, but off the bank property, so no, we didn't lose any, there was nine in there before, there's nine there now.
Okay.
And we actually gained, we have a wider handicap van accessible stall for the, for a, it's a van accessible, there's going to be a sign there tomorrow that says that.
Right.
Sure. That's great.
If there's nothing further, is there a motion to adjourn? Move on Michael Porter, say, Jay Farrell, knows the favor, please do the questioning. Aye.